I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Well, we welcome you here tonight. Once again, I see Principal Britt sitting in the front row with a whole bunch of volleyball players. Congratulations, girls. That's all I have for my opening remarks, so we're on to recognition and celebration. Okay, we got a little setup to do, so while I do my introductory remarks, you'll see some people gathering around, and that will be explained here in a moment. Chair Christopherson, trustees, and Superintendent Hensley, I do love the tradition of attending these meetings with the purpose of celebrating state championship teams. Kelly Walsh High School has amassed an impressive seventeen team state titles since the 2020-21 school year. Tonight, we recognize two programs responsible for our two most recent state titles. In those five years, you will see historic firsts, like our girls' swimming team's first-ever championship, and even back-to-back titles for our girls' tennis teams, girls' soccer, and boys' Nordic ski. What sets apart the students, coaches, and directors that are responsible for our latest two state championships is that they have established themselves as elite programs, envied by other schools all around the state and region. So, it is probably obvious at this point, we will start with the Kelly Walsh Trojan Marching Band. For years, the State Marching Band Festival provided ratings and captions as opposed to state championships that ended this year. Our band had gone into festival every year with the philosophy, and often saying, "It's not a competition, but..." I didn't even practice that with them at all, I promise you, but we're gonna win. Because of their commitment, hard work, and dedication, Kelly Walsh would most times walk away with a superior rating, the highest awarded rating, as well as the most captions. What I'm saying is that if our band had been eligible for state titles over the last five years, there is no doubt that our total number for our school would have been inflated well past seventeen. While I'm about to introduce Sarah Hansen, our band director, I wanted to bring your attention to the fact that many of our band members have their instruments. Oh, by the way, you probably figured that out by now. By request of Chair Christopherson, our band will play some music after Mrs. Hansen's remarks. I warn you that they have one volume setting, loud and proud. Now Sarah Hansen will provide some comments on their season.
Just wanted to say a huge congratulations to these students. These students started working on their season in May and put in countless hours starting in July and August, and many of the people you see here before you are part of what we call our leadership team. They are the students who were selected after auditioning as our drum majors, as our section leaders. We have people here who spent countless hours preparing and doing things behind the scenes, and it's just one small part of this tremendous group of students who truly view the greater good as their ultimate goal. And so, very proud of these students and the time and effort they put in. Even though, yes, this was the first time it was officially a competition, our goal each and every day was to become one percent better, to do one little thing better, to, is this the best they could march, is this the best they could play? But most importantly, the thing that I love about the students you can see in front of you is they are amazing human beings. They look out for each other. They lead with grace and excellence, doing so many things well. We have students involved in sports and cheerleading, and we have kids who are outscoring their peers on the ACT. And so, we are just so proud of these students and the time and effort they put in to bring home the first state championship in over forty years. So, thank you for your support of music in our school district. It starts in sixth grade with them beginning, and your support of that is the result of what you see in front of you today. So, I asked Mr. Britt, is there any reason why we should play quietly? And he says, "No, you want a state championship. You can play." So, I beg some forgiveness. So, we're gonna, we're gonna play two little songs really quick. One is a fun chaser that we'll play in the stands, and one you may have heard before, and then we'll just play a classic. It's called Twenty-Five or Six Divorced. So, we're gonna start with the chaser. Andy, kick 'em off.
Thank you guys so much for that. I've been looking forward to that for twelve years. I've been asking for it for a long time. No, but really, I went and watched you guys win that, and that was the first time I've ever watched a band competition, and it was amazing. I was amazed at how all the other bands acted and how everybody respected each other, and I can't believe that it wasn't a competition, but you're the first state champion in band ever. They can't ever take that away from you, so. Good job. So, you might know from social media, we also have a tradition that's been going on for the last several years in our building where that band leads whatever state championship-winning team through our hallways all the way to the gym for a banner reveal the day, or well, the Monday after a state championship is won. So, we were really struggling on what to do when the band won, because like the principals with kazoo's, we did not know what we were gonna do, so thankfully, you know, we just had about a hundred and forty band members that marched around. They were plenty great. So, moving on, also, I wanted to point out, tonight you'll see my attire is a little bit different than when I'm normally here. It is boot check Monday and the one right prior to Thanksgiving, so I want to provide our grateful feelings and our thankfulness from Kelly Walsh High School administration, staff, and students for your support of the J program, for empowering students and staff to be heard and to talk about what they need to. I know we are saving lives, so thank you again for that. So, did you guys bring instruments? Okay, girls, come on up here, line up behind me, coaches. So, as I mentioned earlier, winning back-to-back state titles is historic in its own right. While Kelly Walsh, the Kelly Walsh volleyball team did just that, over the past two seasons, they repeated back-to-back, the Kelly Walsh program, the Kelly Walsh volleyball program refuses to just be historic. This elite program has won six of the last nine state titles. They have played in the championship match in astonishing ten of the last twelve years. It is no wonder that the saying on the backs of their sweatshirts this year read, go ahead, turn around, "A legacy more intimidating than any opponent." While head coach Jeff Barkel is unfortunately unable to be with us tonight, his assistant coach of the past quite long time, Brittany King, is here to introduce the players and talk about their accomplishments.
I had to make a note of something, so I didn't butcher it. So, yes, in Coach Jeff Barkel's absence, I'm, he's given me the great honor to recognize an outstanding group of young women who have demonstrated dedication, perseverance, teamwork, and competitive excellence. This year, our team made their own mark in Trojan volleyball history by capturing back-to-back state championship titles. From the first serve of the season to the final point of the championship match, this team showed their incredible heart, discipline, and unity. They faced challenges, they worked hard, and they never gave up. Our theme this year, and it was on our warm-up shirts, but it was "Mulan Le Bay", which is an ancient Greek phrase meaning "come and take them." It was famously uttered by King Leonidas of Sparta as a defiant response to the Persian army's demand that its soldiers surrender their weapons. And so, we kind of lived that slogan throughout our season, urging our competitors, "If you want to, come and take it." And so, I think we'll probably continue that into the next year, right? But their success represents not only their athletic talent, but countless hours of practice, the support of their families, the school community, and their commitment to representing our school with pride. Not only are they great volleyball players, but they're great people as well. So, we have Madden Waring, Maddie Cochran, Gia Ireland, Janay Cantrell, Coach Abby Einert, Miley Morrison, Lillian Hudson, Makaya Humphries, Noah Hodgins, Penny Thompson, Morgan Boros, Cedar Smith, and Breckin Fago. So, thank you.
Thank you, girls, so much for coming in. I was bummed I was out of town. I couldn't come watch you play. I usually try never to miss that state championship. It's so fun. They have four courts going, and. So, we have two more, boy, this is a great night, isn't it? We have two more recognitions tonight and celebrations. We're gonna... Ooh, Dr. Charlotte Gilbar's gonna come up and present two schools for us.
Good evening, Chair Christopherson, Superintendent Hensley, and trustees. It is with immense pride and appreciation that I formally get to help recognize the outstanding performance and unwavering dedication of the staff and students at Oregon Trail Elementary. I've had the privilege of working with Principal Delaney and the Oregon Trail staff for several years, and I'm gonna invite them to come join me up here. I am delighted to announce that Oregon Trail Elementary has achieved the designation of a meeting school under the Wyoming Accountability Model. The meeting designation signifies that Oregon Trail Elementary is successfully meeting the rigorous state indicators. Under the leadership of Principal Delaney, this success is a direct testament to the dedicated teachers and staff who collaboratively plan high-quality instruction and build strong, positive relationships with every student. The students of Oregon Trail, whose hard work, resilience, and commitment to learning are the true measure of this success. Not only are there great things happening academically at Oregon Trail, but each staff member really knows their students, and together, they institute the Blazer values. They intentionally teach values that prepare students to be productive citizens, leading healthy and happy lives that make the world a better place. They talk about them every day by teaching the meaning of different values and explaining what the values look like in real life. Students are recognized for their efforts in demonstrating these values at school as well as their academic achievement. I extend my sincere congratulations to the entire Oregon Trail community, their faculty, support staff, students, for their commitment to excellence. Their work ensures that every child at Oregon Trail is on a solid path to academic achievement. I'm gonna turn it over to Principal Delaney.
Good evening, Chair, members of the school board, district leadership, and members of our community. I am so excited to honor this tremendous work happening at Oregon Trail, the collaboration among our staff, intentional focus on student growth, and the shared belief that every child can succeed has made a powerful difference. Oregon Trail's teachers have demonstrated what is possible when a school community commits fully to both teamwork and high expectations. Their dedication is felt not only within their old building, but really across the whole district. That collaboration, that Natrona County values so much, teachers working together, schools supporting one another, and united mission to help every student grow. Our accountability, the meeting results, reflect our countless hours of planning, adapting, encouraging, and innovating on behalf of children. To our teachers, district-wide, but especially at Oregon Trail Elementary, thank you. Your professionalism, your perseverance, and your unwavering belief in kids are the foundation of this accomplishment. And to the board and district leadership, thank you for fostering an environment where collaboration thrives and where educators feel supported to do their best work. Tonight, we celebrate not because the work is finished, but because the work that we're doing is working. And together, we will continue moving our students, our schools, and really our whole community forward. Thank you.
Chair Christopherson, Superintendent Hensley, and trustees, it's super exciting. I get to introduce two schools today. So, it is with great excitement that we celebrate the remarkable progress Midwest School has made in its performance under the Accountability Model. If Principal Brainard and his team could come up and join me, please. It is with immense pride that I share that Midwest School has moved from the status of not meeting to meeting expectations in just one academic year. This is a significant achievement for the school that speaks volumes about the dedication of their students and staff. The Wyoming Accountability and Education Act is the framework by which Wyoming schools are evaluated. Midwest serves K through twelve, so it gets evaluated on both the K eight indicators and the high school indicators. This rapid improvement is a direct result of the focused effort, intentional collaborative work through the professional learning model and a shared commitment to educational excellence. Under the leadership of Mr. Brainard, Midwest School focused on the PLC model and shared accountability through the school improvement planning process to partner and make tremendous improvements. This is more than just a change in designation. It represents tangible progress in student learning and a testament to the resilience and hard work of everyone in the Midwest school community. I extend my congratulations to the Midwest community, and it is an honor to work with them every day, and it is a great day to be a Midwest Euler. Mr. Brainard.
Good evening, Chair Christopherson, Superintendent Hensley, and trustees, and pre-K through twelve, so that's okay. That's okay. We love our littles. My name is Mike Brainard. I am blessed to be the principal of Midwest School. We are honored to be here tonight to celebrate Midwest and the achievement of being identified as a meeting school on the Wyoming State Accountability Model. I'd like to begin by introducing the wonderful team joining me this evening. Mr. Mickey Anderson, Mrs. Cheryl Anderson, Mrs. Stacy Rogers, Mrs. Elizabeth Cornet, and Mrs. Mercedes Lindsay. Over the past year, Midwest staff and students have worked incredibly hard, to say the least. Their commitment and perseverance have not only earned us the designation of a meeting school, but the... But they led the state in the highest growth in not just one category, but two, math and science. So, again, the highest growth in the state in two subjects. This accomplishment reflects the dedication of our entire school community. Not only our teachers and students, but also our social worker and counselor, custodians, ESPs, our librarian, office staff, cabinet members, and district leadership, instructional facilitators, our nurse, our cafeteria team, behavior support staff, and the coaches who champion academic excellence both on and off the field. At Midwest, our focus and continued focus is teaching grade-level standards using proven instructional strategies. In our PLCs, teachers and IFs collaborate to unpack standards, develop proficiency skills, and design assessments that provide meaningful feedback to teachers, students, and parents about progress towards those standards. As we celebrate Midwest accomplishments tonight, we also look ahead. Our goal in the upcoming years is not only to be meeting, but to exceed. Our work is not done. Thank you for having us this evening, and as always, go Oilers.
We have reached the point of our meeting where we have our limited public forum, and we love to hear from you. As always, we ask you to be courteous to both the speakers and people who may not agree with you, and like always, we have three minutes that you can talk. If, we do ask that you give your name, and if you're not comfortable giving us your address, and you want us to get back to you, there's a sign-up sheet or a place you can put your name and address over here on this table. And having said that, come forward and please limit to three minutes. If it's green, yeah, push it, and we'll just leave it on. If it's green, it's good.
Good evening, Mayor Christopherson, Chairs of the Board, and Board of Trustees. My name's Olivia Walter, and I'm a resident of Natrona County. I am the mother of Maya Walter, a five-year-old kindergartner at Woods Learning Center. I'm approaching you all today with deep concern and urgency regarding a serious safety incident involving my daughter on November tenth of 2025. On that day, I learned that Maya had eloped from the school during class time. She was able to leave her classroom, put on her jacket, and backpack, and exit through the front entrance door without anyone noticing. Maya then walked all the way to Walsh Drive, where she was ultimately found by a passing driver. This was an extremely dangerous situation that could have resulted in severe and irreversible harm. As a parent, the thought of what might have happened is devastating. I'm sharing this not only as Maya's mother, but as also a member of this community who believes in the importance of student safety. Maya's incident could have been prevented, and I am deeply concerned that without immediate action, another child in our district may face a similar or even more tragic situation. I strongly urge the district to take steps to ensure that this never happens again. Specifically, I am requesting that the district allocate funding to ensure adequate staffing and supervision throughout the school day, install or expand security camera coverage within school buildings and at all entrances and exits, implement or update emergency crisis preparedness protocols, especially for young and vulnerable students, develop a clear district-wide elopement prevention and response policy, provide training for staff on recognizing, responding to, and preventing elopement and other high-risk behaviors. Our schools must be equipped to protect every child in their care. No child or no parent should ever receive a call, or worse, not receive a call at all, informing them that their child has left the building unnoticed. I'm asking the district to treat this matter with the seriousness it deserves and to take immediate corrective action so that all children in Natrona County schools are safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walter.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Herman. I came here tonight with a completely different speech prepared, but before I even walked in, I was told the decision to move the Paradise Valley FLS program was already finalized behind closed doors. That tells me everything I need to know about how this district continues to operate, and it is extremely discouraging. As a former employee, I know this pattern all too well. Decisions are made from the top down with no regard for families or staff whose lives these decisions directly affect. My son is non-verbal and developmentally delayed. He has been in the FLS program at PV for three years. On Friday, I received a call informing me that he's been automatically enrolled at Fort Casper Academy for next year because the district has chosen to consolidate the FLS programs, claiming the program suddenly needs extra support. It's ironic this comes after two entire schools' worth of students were displaced. So, now the district is scrambling to fix a space problem and dressing it as students needing more support. It's insulting. Just be honest, this isn't about what's best for kids or extra support. It's about numbers, square footage, funding, and the convenience. I spoke with the Director of Special Education this morning and was told this decision was made entirely at cabinet and director level. No parent involvement, no staff involvement. My son's teachers and support staff were just as blindsided as I was. That is not collaboration, and it certainly isn't putting students first, especially the vulnerable ones that literally cannot speak for themselves and rely on others to advocate for them. The district is uprooting the most vulnerable students who rely on routine predictability and trusted relationships. PV is my son's home. He is safe, supported, and understood there, and you are removing him from that, from a recently remodeled ADA classroom and bathroom and an environment built around nurturing every student at their level, to place him in a strict, high-academic and performance environment that is not built for every learner. I still haven't been given a real, solid answer as to why Fort Casper's FLS program can't be moved to the newly remodeled ADA classroom at PV, or why the base program from Bar Nun isn't going to the Evansville School, which actually has the infrastructure and Title I funding to support it. Instead, I'm told that this decision is final, but to please come speak at the board because you guys like to hear from families. The district doesn't have an enrollment problem. It has a top-down decision-making problem. Fix that, and families and employees will stay. You'll have the staffing and the funding that you so desperately need. Make decisions with transparency, respect, and please uphold the commitment in your welcoming letter, Superintendent Hensley, and create a collaborative environment with people who actually know what's best for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herman.
Good evening, members of the board, and more specifically Superintendent Hensley. My name is Kaya Spiva, and I am here tonight as a parent of a child in the Functional Life Skills Program at Paradise Valley. If you weren't aware, I have had an extremely limited amount of time to prepare and gather information before I had to compose this speech and sit before you tonight. I cannot help but to think, was this done on purpose? I have so much more to say, so please be watching your emails. On Friday morning, I was told my son would be automatically enrolled in the FLS program at Fort Casper because the program was being relocated. I want to emphasize, parents, children, and staff were not consulted before this decision was made. This is morally and ethically wrong on every single level. Superintendent Hensley, I truly hope you feel a... Superintendent Hensley, I truly hope you feel ashamed and embarrassed. As I quote directly from your letter, "We are committed to a collaborative atmosphere that serves the best interest of all students and staff." Mike Thompson reassured me that my concerns were heard and that he understood, but I must ask, how can you understand the impact on my child without speaking to the people directly involved in his education? Our children are not numbers in a program. They are individuals who require daily accommodation, trust, and a team effort to thrive. You told us his teachers and staff would move with him, but FLS is much more than a teacher and staff. It's a team of therapists, administrators, friends, and family who have spent three years building relationships, earning trust, and creating a safe environment. With one decision, you took away my boy's therapist, my boy's teachers, my boy's friends, my boy's familiar routine, and my boy's safe space. And you did so without consulting those who love and care for him every single day. So my question is, what information was used to justify moving the FLS program from Paradise Valley to Fort Casper? Let's look at the mission statements. Fort Casper's mission emphasizes training and academic goals. My child's goals are life skills, not college readiness. He struggles in rigid, non-flexible environments. Paradise Valley's mission emphasizes differentiated instruction, intentional learning, and inquiry-based experiences. This is exactly what my child needs to succeed. So I ask again, why Fort Casper over Paradise Valley? To many parents, this seems like a clear mismatch. Are you prepared to rewrite an entire school's mission, policies, and curriculum to accommodate these children? Or is your intention to further burden teachers and parents to rewrite every single child's IEP? Please consider the alternative of moving Fort Casper.
Thank you, Ms. Spiva.
Good evening. My name is Eric Wymer, and I'm here tonight as the parent of a child with special needs. I stand before you tonight because a decision was made about my child's education without including the people who know him best. Last week, we received a phone call informing us our child's FLS program would be moved. It was presented as a simple change, but in reality, it was a decision made without consulting parents, staff, or the children affected. Our entire care team was unaware of this change, leaving them just as confused as we were. This move is not just about logistics, it's about people. My son will lose his principal Brett Theobar, who has built an inclusive, compassionate community. He will lose friendships across all grade levels and abilities, friendships that were very difficult for a child with special needs to form. He may lose his therapist and support staff, who know his history, his milestones, and how to motivate him on his hard days. He will lose his daily connection with his younger brother, who also attends the same school in the Mandarin DLI program. His brother is one of his biggest advocates in aiding in communicating his needs within the community. These are not small losses. They are disruptions to the stability and trust that children with special needs rely on. Parents deserve more than a phone call on a Friday morning. We deserve transparency, respect, and a voice in decisions that directly affect our children. So tonight, I ask for answers. Why was the decision made? Who made the decision? Were other options considered? And most importantly, why weren't family and staff consulted at all? We challenge the district to make this right and to respect parents as partners, to respect children by giving them the stability and community, and to ensure future decisions are made with transparency, collaboration, and compassion. When you silence parents, you silence the very children that cannot speak for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wymer.
Good evening, my name is Ross Schriftman, resident in Casper. First of all, congratulations to the schools and the teachers that have made improvements. With the closing of two elementary schools, your last meeting was the saddest I have attended. No one on this board should be surprised that you had to face this difficult decision. According to district documents, you've already closed 12 schools over the last several years. This has been a trend not only in our district, but throughout our nation. Simply put, there are less children. In 1960, there were 24 live births per thousand U.S. population. Last year, it was just 12. The district has a net loss of almost 800 students over the last four years. You can try and blame the legislature for the problems you are facing, but think about it. Is the legislature murdering babies and mutilating children, robbing them of their fertility? Is the legislature telling young people that having children is a burden to avoid rather than a joyful blessing from God? Is it the legislature's fault that student proficiency rates around the nation have been on a downward trend? No wonder some parents are seeking alternatives to traditional education. The 25% exemption for residential property taxes has zero effect negatively on your budget. The state backfills this reduction for school districts. Last year, your budget was $394 million. This year, it's $428 million. And we're having many schoolchildren still struggling. Why is that? As far as student-to-teacher ratio, when I attended public school from first to 12th grade, all of my classes had more than 30 students. Back then, teacher's aids were most likely headache medicine. We all learned, and there was discipline in the classroom. There were active, effective parent-teacher organizations in my school as well. Do we need to reduce some of the burdensome regulations? Perhaps that is an area where the legislature can provide some help. Finally, we citizens who come here and provide constructive criticism are the ones trying to save public education. That is why we take the time to provide you with our ideas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Schriftman. If anybody else would like to speak, now is the time to come forward or wait two weeks. Seeing nobody, we will move on to the consent agenda. Superintendent Hensley.
Trustees, there are five items for your consideration on the consent agenda. Executive session minutes of November 10th, general session minutes of that same date, the certified and classified personnel report, district bills of November 7th and 14th, and there are two bids for major maintenance projects that would replace the flooring, so the carpet and the tile in both Summit and Paradise Valley.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda items.
I second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? I guess I have to apologize. I see that we had left off the setting of the agenda. Does anybody have something they need to add or subtract from the agenda? Okay, we just won't do that one this time, and we'll get it back on the agenda next time. Reports and recommendations, Superintendent Hensley.
There are two grants for your consideration tonight. A $5,000 grant to Journey Elementary from the John P. L. Bogan Foundation to support literacy and strengthen the culture. And then a $500 grant to Manor Heights Elementary from the Daughters of the American Revolution Helen Pouch Memorial Fund to replace chick-hatching equipment.
Those are action items? Do I have a motion?
I move approval.
Yeah, we have a second? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand. That is unanimous. Okay, we're down to number two, trustee reports. We have a Board Budget Committee report. Yavi.
Okay, thank you so much. Board budget, which I know is very contentious at this moment in time. I'm grateful for those of you who are here tonight, who can listen. I hope to be more vocal and help our community be more understanding because it can be really, really difficult to understand, especially for me, who sits as the chair of this budget committee. I definitely want to give as much and the best information I can, but I also encourage you to please look today at our agenda items from our budget meeting today and kind of be able to go through them. I will start. We basically talked about our prime objectives and our budget development plan. So I really want to encourage you guys to go because it's a reminder that we want to always maintain a focus on student learning, and we definitely want to continue with our strategic district goals. We always want to achieve operational efficiencies and effectiveness while building and maintaining resilience. We definitely try hard to maintain competitive compensation packages, and we definitely try hard to maintain our facilities to avoid the effects of deferred maintenance and ensure safe and insecure environments. So with those in mind, that kind of helps guide and direct us as to when we talk about things within the budget. We did have an annual enrollment report. We had our 60-day enrollment and our 60-day ADM. So our 60-day enrollment is about 11,501 students. That's down 440 students from this time last year. And then our 60-day ADM is about 11,279. That's down 443 students from the same time last year. So we, of course, have talked multiple times about the fact that enrollment is going down a lot faster than I think we expected, which obviously plays a big role into our budgeting. If you also look at our agenda today, it had been asked by several board members in the past, so I encourage you to look at this as to why kids maybe are leaving the district. I thought this was very valuable and important information. So there are numbers that go into what the exit code is and those number of students. And just to be clear, when it says dropped out slash transfer, not fully documented, that could basically just range if a child has stopped attending the district, but we don't know why they've stopped attending the district. We did, of course, have our budget report. We had our budget report. We talked about recommended strategies, and then we, as a board, wanted to start with inputs through the process, as you guys have been told. And we also understand we are going to continue to lose money. So with school closures and other things happening, we have to figure out where those next cuts are going to be made. And it was really important for us to understand the difference of the funds, and so which funds directly are impacted by the recalibration committee, which is only the general operating funds. So over 80% of that is just budgets and salaries. So that's primarily where that unfortunately will be affected the most based on what we get from legislation. Okay, and then we did have two program requests. I personally understand that as the time comes, we will have to be, of course, looking at things that we will cut. But this comes from a budget that is completely separate, of course, from the general operating funds. And these are specifically set aside for certain things. So no matter if we did or didn't approve these projects, then the money just basically sits there in the account. And I also did specifically state that futuristically, while we look at this stuff, it wouldn't be fair of us, I think, to say, let's just cut this now without giving those entities understanding as to that might be something futuristically that we will not be able to fund. So we did have a request from the Natrona County Public Library to help fund their summer reading program of $49,999. And then we did have a request from the Wyoming Symphony Orchestra for $15,000 for the Music on the Move Children's Program, and those were both approved today to be funded from our rec board funds that are specific to, gosh, why am I losing the school district? So like I said, they're not completely separate funds. There's nothing else that they can be allotted for when it comes to paying for a teacher. And if we didn't use them for what we know is necessary to help our community, then those funds would just sit in the account. That was basically about it. I just want to remind everybody that this is a continuing process, and I know that some of the people have said tonight, it is very valuable what we hear from our community, but it is just as valuable, I think, that you allow us the opportunity to explain to you. I know trustees have talked multiple times about wanting to have ideas or have people talk to us about things, but that doesn't necessarily mean that if you give us your idea, we can do that idea. But just having those ideas gives us a place to start and a place to look at for this continuation of this process, which, again, we have a very, very good budget process. It's not going to be fun for a couple of months, weeks, years, but we are, I think, dedicated to making it as good as we possibly can. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a couple of board policy recommendations coming forward for second reading, so these will be action.
Thank you, Chair Christopherson. The Board Policy Committee recommends that Board Policy 5320 regarding physical education and class attire be retired as requirements for attire in PE classes are already outlined in student handbooks. So I make a motion to retire Board Policy 5350.
Do I have a second?
5320.
Trustee True Wells, who's our second, any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Okay.
Anamis?
Continuing, the Board Policy Committee recommends that highlighted changes be made to Board Policy 5350 regarding K-12 academic competitions. These changes already align to current practice. Consequently, I make the motion to revise Board Policy 5350 as recommended.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Anamis to me. Thank you. Okay, we have trustee reports. We will start with trustee Schmidt with the BOSI's report.
Our BOSI's total accounts total for $826,272.14 currently, so it has a healthy balance to go forward with the spring semester. We have issued, or our budget, or our BOSI's manager did an enrollment comparison report for us, and she has determined that the fall enrollment in dual and concurrent courses, after seeing five years of growth, the last two years have shown a slight decline in dual credit courses taken by high school students at the college or online, while there's been a growth in the concurrent credit courses. So more kids are taking college-level courses at the high school than actually going to the college themselves. We did, the FY '26 BOSI's Board did negotiate a flat rate for those concurrent tuition courses into the amount of $119,500 to be reimbursed to Casper College. And this has given BOSI's a savings of $229,478 from last fall. We are taking our investment account, YO-Star, and going to, we have voted to move it to Y-Gift, which is a better, more accessible savings account. So it allows us to move money around when we need to for tuition payments. And we have reviewed and voted on the policy review of requiring grants and programs to give us a final report after the project is completed within 60 days. And our legal issues is one that's kind of been ongoing and hopefully will be resolved by our December meeting, which is that our bylaws, BOSI's bylaws, need some restructuring, and it has caused some issues with us. So we are hoping to have that settled and have a report at the December meeting. And finally, the Jazz Festival Endowment Report. The Jazz Festival has always been supported by BOSI's, and we have asked since they started an endowment what that total endowment was. And they reported that when it was created, it was created and held at $9,600, but in 2425, the value of the endowment is $187,105. So the goal is to build the endowment up to $1 million to support the annual budget of the festival of $55,000. And so they have put together a fundraising plan to meet the goal. So if any of you who attend the Jazz Festival in the future would like to support the program, they would be more than happy to take your donations. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, you have a Wyoming School Board Association, right?
Thank you, Chair Christopherson. Well, as we all know, the annual conference of the Wyoming School Board Association was held here in Casper last week with several of our trustees and administrators in attendance. We had two and a half days of incredibly inspirational speakers, very beneficial discussions, and unbelievably helpful breakout sessions covering a wide variety of subjects. I especially enjoyed the amazing informational legal updates presented by the WSBA Legal Counsel Scott Kopeci. But it wasn't all just information-based. There was time for individual and group recognition. And in that regard, Chair Christopherson, it gives me great pleasure to present to you as our chair this plaque of recognition for our board's commitment to to present to you as our chair, this plaque of recognition for our board's commitment to educational growth.
I think this is for the whole board, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I was getting a big hit there for a second.
And that concludes my comments, Chair Christopherson.
Well, I was pretty sad that I missed that. I was net deep in a remodeling project up in the mountains. Got to take advantage of it when the snow is not there. So. Well, what have we got here now? School visits. Dana, did you end up going to a school?
Thank you, Chair Christopherson. Our last school visit was two weeks ago. We didn't have one this last week because of the conference. We went to CY, met with Randall Bauer and his leadership team on November 12th. And after introductions and Angela's remarks, we first heard about the STEM Club. It has over 40 members currently, and it seems that more students are coming all the time. We heard that the day to day work on school culture and climate is proving to be great for staff and students alike. Teachers talked about how you you can tell when students have come from CY because of how they do things, what they expect of themselves. And from the type of things like the type of study habits they have to how students like to get involved in what is going on. They do use a program called Character Strong, and it seems to be working at CY. I can remember my my granddaughter telling me it wasn't her favorite thing at Kelly Walsh. But at CY, it seems to be working very well. The teachers live it, and apparently so do the students by how the people in the building treat each other. And that makes me want to go hang out during the day and watch and see how that works. They, the leadership team did talk a lot about the accommodation overload. There are, they have a lot of students with a lot of accommodations. And of course, they are short special ed teachers and aides. And so that makes it extra hard to take care of not only the special needs students, but also all the students. They also mentioned the need for more tutors. So. And I'm Superintendent Hensley, I didn't have a a school visit for this next week. Is that correct? But there's one on the 10th? Okay, there wasn't one on my calendar. Okay. Okay, the pick is on December 3rd. And I think we'll have a meeting and a tour if I'm not mistaken. And then on December 10th, we will be at Burda James.
Thank you. Other business, we have a donation appreciation.
We would like to express our appreciation for the following six donations. Kiltz Contracting Inc. donated $5,000 for a scoreboard and Shot Clock for the Midwest School Gymnasium. Goodwill Industries of Wyoming donated $2,400 to support the Midwest Robotics Team. McDonald's donated $100 to support the Midwest Robotics Team. Cameron Walker donated $100 to support the Midwest Robotics Team. Holly Manager donated an undrivable car to the NCHS Automotive Class. And Wyoming Steel and Recycling donated $1,000 to NCHS Speech and Debate to support their trip to Harvard. So again, we appreciate all donations.
Okay, yeah, it's always, it looks like the Midwest guys were out fundraising pretty good, huh? Yeah. Hey, where the trustee comments, we'll start down here with Taya and see what she has to say.
Good evening, all. Thank you for hanging with us. My first, since this is the week or a few days before Thanksgiving, there's lots of thanks in this. First, to the Elbogen Foundation, the Daughters of the American Revolution, and all of the businesses and individuals for their continued support of the myriad of options here in our district. These things matter. As we can see with the Kelly Walsh Band, the KDA volleyball team, Midwest and Oregon Trail, there are some amazing things happening in our district. And through continued support, both monetarily and volunteer wise and just emotional support, these things do matter. So thanks to that. I would also like to thank trustee Schmidt for sharing her conclusions on the ACT on her Facebook page. While I have some concerns on those, I am glad that she found the testing results for the ACT important enough to take the time to present her thoughts. I encourage folks to look at her page and to get her insights. Last meeting, I submitted my analysis on the statewide scores as compared to other states as for the ACT for states that test 100% or 90 plus of their students. This analysis can be found on my trustee Facebook page. Today, I would like to publish my second analysis, second of three on the district scores. At the December 8th meeting, I will publish my last analysis on school and individual data ranges. I will also provide my trustee thoughts for what I think we as a board can do to encourage improvement in these scores and rankings. So a bit of background before I dig in. The ACT acts as a snapshot accountability test along with being a nationally normed college readiness test. The Wyoming Department of Education uses the results in their accountability profiles of districts and schools. The state of Wyoming uses the results as part of their Hathaway Scholarship requirements. The University of Wyoming and local community colleges use individual results for math and English placements into courses. Many out of state colleges and universities use score information for scholarships. And a growing number are re-implementing score requirements for admissions. These scores matter. The district rankings and trend line charts will be in my analysis on my Facebook picture or my my Facebook page. But the big picture, the conclusions are this. The district class of 2025, so the great, the class that just graduated, their ACT scores demonstrate that Natrona County School District was close, but not quite in the top five of large districts in our state. Laramie One, which is Cheyenne, our closest demographic district is slightly ahead of our scores. And Sweetwater Number Two, Green River, is our closest match. NCSD scored in the second quartile at the bottom in composite reading and English. We scored in the top of the third quartile in math and in the middle of the third quartile in science. We are between point three and point four points away from the top five of large districts. We primarily scored the sixth out of the out of the top 10, but we did have one seventh out of 10. Our year over year scores since COVID were slightly down. This was a small sample size, so there are limits to the in-depth conclusions that can be made. Moving forward, we should thoughtfully incentivize students to improve on their predecessors' results and stretch towards that top, our top year. We should and can be in the, this is my opinion, totally my opinion. We should strive to be in the top five of the top 10 large districts. And we should also strive strive to be in mid-range of the second quartile. It will help students personally, help their school, help the district, and help the state. On an additional note, my last Thanksgiving here. We should be grateful for the time and energy that all of our staff put into our students. Education is hard, and it is very multifaceted. Thank you to the administration, teachers, ESPs, special education rock stars, and everyone else that makes schools work. I would like to leave with a very special thank you to a group of people. I would like to thank the janitorial staff. They put up with a lot. For example, in elementary school, my youngest daughter liked to get out of class by going to the bathroom. She would stay there and clog up the toilet. Then pretending to be the hero, she'd run down to the office and let them know that the the bathroom was not of use. And then she would go get the janitor and try to help the janitor clean up the mess that just happened to be there, all to avoid going back to to do her schoolwork. So thanks to all the janitorial staff that make our schools function and sometimes remind students that they are in the school to learn. Your patience with the gross and the icky and the wayward students is so appreciated. I hope all of you in our audience and all of you up here have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Be good to others. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Alvey.
Okay, I wanted to echo what Taya said. I do appreciate and value all of you that come out and speak to us here. And I kind of wanted to highlight that we had a work session today, which was a nice reminder as to what our roles are as trustees, what it is that we can do, what we should be doing. And I have to say, that's kind of been one of the biggest learning curves because sometimes what the public wants us to do, what we can do versus what we as trustees want to do for the public can vary very differently. So I think, of course, our district is going through some growing right now, some some different, you know, situations. And I just appreciate that you guys are coming out and speaking to us and that you're here for it and that we can all work on this together. I just, I wanted to highlight because we had talked about kind of what our expectations are of each other, and that was really powerful to me. I absolutely love working with every single one of these individuals up here. And I think at our last meeting, everybody had a little bit of something different to say in terms of, you know, why we're seeing some of the struggles that we're seeing, and they were all correct. I think every single person knows that we're losing students and parents aren't, people aren't moving here with kids and people are leaving because Wyoming generally generally tends to be a boom or a bust state. But then we do have to acknowledge that we get our funds from our state legislature. And when they, you know, start to take funds away, we have to look at that also. So everybody was correct in understanding why some of the things that are happening are happening. And kind of going along also with what trustee True Well said, it is the time of Thanksgiving. And I love that you highlighted the custodial staff. My personal favorite is definitely the food staff. The people in the cafeterias, the lunchroom workers, they are absolutely phenomenal. Students are required to have to take a certain like amount of food, and they encourage those kids greatly to get their fruits and their veggies in. And they walk around and tell those kids to sit down and eat. And I love it because my son, of course, is very chatty, comes home hungry. And I have to tell him politely, I love you, but you probably should shut up and eat your food. So I just appreciate all the teachers and staff that continue to show up because, again, education is hard. There's a lot of hard things right now, and I value each and every one of you who work with those students directly because it is very powerful and impactful work. And yes, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. B.
Oh, that's a good one. I also want to thank everybody for coming and speaking, and we need to hear from you. We can't always meet your needs, but we need to listen and give them consideration. And and that's very important for what we do. I want to congratulate the Kelly Walsh Marching Band, state championship. And I had an advantage that none of you probably did, but when that band was playing, I could turn my hearing aids down. I loved the music, but I didn't have to have it quite that loud. And I want to congratulate the Kelly Walsh Volleyball, state champions, as well as, okay, we've got Oregon Trail meeting status, moved to meeting status. And that's, that's really important. That's awesome. And then we have Midwest went from not meeting to meeting with the highest growth in math and science in the state. That's incredible. So that's all the good news. Since our last meeting, I was, had the fortune to go to two very special meetings. One was with Dean Morgan teachers and Principal Tuttle. And another was with CY teachers and Principal Bauer. They love their students and they want them all to be well welcome and motivated. I'm always impressed and encouraged when I visit Natrona County Schools. As board members, we receive a lot of criticism from parents and people who disagree with our decisions or don't think that we are doing enough. I understand. I have been there myself. Yet, yes, we are concerned with bullying, suicide attempts, not doing enough to take care of and teach our students. But when we visit with principals, teachers, and staff, we hear the passion that they have for teaching and compassion that they have for their students and and each other. It can be very uplifting. With Thanksgiving come up, coming up, we all need to thank those people who make a difference in our lives and certainly the lives of our children. Teachers are there for our kids and grandkids, and we need to be there for them. Please be sure to thank teachers and staff for the good work that they do. We really want and need to say thanks for all of their giving to our students, families, and community. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Schmidt.
I would first like to start with the families that came up and spoke about the moving of your program to Fort Casper. I'm sorry that things weren't handled in a way that made you feel comfortable and that made the situation easier for you. I hope that in the future, we as a board and as a district can handle these situations in a more timely and in a more compassionate way. I understand greatly how much, how difficult this is for your kids to have to make this transition. It is not an easy transition for most kids that we've heard about that are involved in this shutting down of Barnan and Woods. I can only imagine how difficult it is for your children who rely heavily on steady hands at the school that they're at, and to transition them is going to be difficult. And I hope that you will bring to us any problems that may happen in the future so that we can hopefully address those. So again, I apologize for that, and I hope that we can get you better answers in the future. I would like to also congratulate KW for both their championships in band and in volleyball. I attended the volleyball games. It was great fun to watch them. So congratulations. And I would like to end kind of on two history notes. One, congratulations to Midwest. This is the 100 year, this month marks the 100 year anniversary of their first football game played under the lights in this entire country. So congratulations. At least it's nicer weather, I'm sure, this year than it was 100 years ago. And then I'm going to finally leave you with this. Because it's our 250th anniversary next July, this is the first Thanksgiving proclamation that occurred on October 3rd, 1789 by George Washington, our first president. Where is it the duty of all nations to acknowledge the providence of Almighty God, to obey His will, to be grateful for His benefits, and humbly to implore His protection and favor? And whereas both houses of Congress have by their joint committee requested me to recommend to the people of the United States a day of public Thanksgiving and prayer, to be observed by acknowledging with grateful hearts the many signals favors of Almighty God, especially by affording them an opportunity peaceably to establish a form of government for their safety and happiness. Now therefore, I do recommend and assign Thursday, the 26th day of November next, to be devoted by the people of these states to the service of that great and glorious being who is the beneficent author of all, all the good that was, that is, or that will be, that we may then all unite in rendering unto Him our sincere and humble things for His kind care and protection of the people of this country previous to their becoming a nation, for the signal and manifold mercies and favorable interpositions of His providence, which we experienced in the course and conclusion of the late war, for the great degree of tranquility, union, and plenty, which we have since enjoyed, for the peaceable and rational manner in which we have been enabled to establish constitutions of government for our safety and happiness, and particularly the national one now lately instituted, for the civil and religious liberties with which we are blessed and the means we have acquiring and diffusing useful knowledge, and in general, for all the great and various favors which He hath been pleased to confer upon us. And also that we may then unite in most humbling offerings, our prayers and supplications to the great Lord and ruler of nations and beseech Him to pardon our national and other transgressions to enable us all, whether in public or private station, to perform our several and relative duties properly and punctually, to render our national government a blessing, all the people, by constantly being a government of wise, just, and constitutional laws, discreetly and faithfully executed and obeyed, to protect and guide all sovereign nations, especially such as have shown kindness unto us, and to bless them with good government, peace, and concord.
have shown kindness unto us, and to bless them with good government, peace, and concord, to promote the knowledge and practice of true religion and virtue, and to increase of science among them and us, and generally to grant unto all mankind such a degree of temporal prosperity as He alone knows to be best, given under my hand at the City of New York the third day of October in the year of our Lord, 1789. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Dana. No, I didn't forget him. He gets last word. Dana.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight, especially those of you that spoke to us and were listening. I'd also like to congratulate, since I spent so much time at Kelly Walsh, I was so tickled to see that band and, and the volleyball team. But I'm always excited when our schools are meeting, excelling, whatever it is they're doing and improving, and Oregon Trail and Midwest. That's just, it's a fantastic deal. So otherwise, I think everything else has been said very eloquently. So that's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Hopkins.
Thank you. Congratulations to Kelly Walsh Marching Band on winning the state championship and for the short performance. I also congratulate Kelly Walsh Volleyball Team on earning their state champions title as well. I also want to recognize Oregon Trail and Midwest for being named meeting expectation schools, an accomplishment that reflects the hard work of the student, staff, and families. Thank you to everyone who joined us tonight to hold us accountable and for sharing your thoughts. Your voices matter. Last week, along with several other trustees, I attended Wyoming School Board Association Conference. I didn't use the acronym on purpose, so everyone knew, would know what that was. I participated in sessions including Asti Attorney, Behavioral Threat Assessment Team, Preventing Violence Through Early Intervention, and Collaboration. Regarding recalibration, recap, excuse me, recalibration, I got stuck on the word. The legislature has not yet finalized its direction. So much of what we are hearing remains speculative currently. To the parents of students in the FLS program, I am sorry that there wasn't better communication. I hope after tonight that your questions you've asked are answered. To the mother that her young child walked away from school, I am thankful that your child is safe. Regarding your ideas that you brought tonight, I encourage the administration to take them in consideration. I wish the Natrona County School District community a peaceful and meaningful Thanksgiving. With the recent closures of two schools, I know this season carries a mix of emotions for many. Even so, I've been deeply moved by the resilience, kindness, and strength shown across our community. I'm hoping that together, we can build a future that supports every student.
trustee Perino.
Thank you all for being here tonight. So much to celebrate in our district, as always, and congrats to everyone that we celebrated this evening. The band was a nice touch. I wish we had that every time we had a meeting. I also had an opportunity to attend NC Football's Senior Dinner last week, which was wonderful. They're a pretty incredible and goofy group of young men, and I wish them the best of luck. And the thank you to the parents that hosted that dinner. There's a lot of stress and hardship for many right now in our community and in our nation. So as you head into the rest of the week, please hold kindness in your heart for yourself and for those who may be experiencing hard times. And if you celebrate Thanksgiving, happy Thanksgiving. And if not, I hope you are able to have a restful and enjoyable few days.
Thank you, trustees to Deli. I will make you the last one with your amazing orational voice.
Thank you, Chair Christopherson. I'll try not to let you down. Oh, let's see. Wow. First, thank you all for coming this evening and being a part of what I have always enjoyed calling Democracy in Action. The first time I attended a board meeting, I was being presented as the Natrona County Teacher of the Year. That was a long time ago. Know how many people there were in the audience? Brad Diller and myself. I am so glad to see all of you here. Thank you. Congratulations to Director Sarah Hanson and the amazing students who dedicate an unbelievable amount of time and talents to the Kelly Walsh Marching Band. I especially have to thank them for their rendition of 25 or 6 to 4, which I used to listen to repeatedly on my old little record player during my high school senior year back in... I probably still have that vinyl album someplace, because as my family will be happy to tell you, I never throw anything away. And in terms of there not really having been a marching band contest in prior years, well, I can just simply say, that's because when it comes to the Trojan Marching Band, there is no contest. And given the incredible record of the last several years, I think that applies to this year's state volleyball champions as well. Go Trojans! And congratulations, of course, to Oregon Trail and Midwest for their commitment to academic excellence. Trustee Schmidt, thank you so very much for that wonderful Thanksgiving blessing. It has to be among the best that I personally have ever heard. Thank you so very much for that. To that, oh, and George Washington, right. We wouldn't have known about it if you hadn't brought it here. To that, I can only add, to you, to all of you and everyone you love, a most wonderful and happy Thanksgiving season. Thank you, Chair Christopherson.
No, thank you. That's better said than I ever could, so I would just pass it right on to Angela.
I would just echo, happy Thanksgiving. Your next meeting will be December 8th at 6 o'clock here in Sitchell Services.
We're adjourned.